Six o'clock, we're gonna call the May twentieth Board of Ed meeting to order if everybody can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Republic, which it stands.
Nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda is public comments. I don't know if anyone has anything to. Share with us. Public comment. And their call for public comment. Seeing none, we are going to hold on the approval of minutes till the next meeting. There's an error in there, so we're gonna wait till the next meeting. And the next thing on the agenda is our Cape Student Leadership Award.
We'll speak slowly about the.
Yeah.
Do I come up?
Oh, okay.
But I'm pleased to present Daylon Jackson for the Cape Leadership Report. Daylon has challenged herself throughout her high school education with rigorous coursework and has strived to be an active member and leader in a variety of extracurricular activities. As you know, Daylon is a student representative to the Board of Education and was chosen for this role by the Student Senate. In addition to participating in Student Senate, she's attended leadership conferences, including the Hugh O'Brien Leadership Seminar and the ECC Spring Sports Leadership Conference to connect with others and further explore and strengthen her leadership skills. Daylon is deeply invested in all her activities, which also includes peers reaching out, for which she was nominated for by teachers, key club, and the crew team. In addition to her commitment to these activities, she also finds time to volunteer as a summer crew mentor where she teaches middle school age students the ins and outs of rowing. Daylon will not be in attendance at our next Board of Ed meeting because she will be inducted into the National Honor Society. Congratulations, Daylon. Mr. Newton, can I come up for a picture?
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect timing. I'm pleased to present Thomas Matlock for the Cape Leadership. Tom works hard in all areas of his life, a successful student who takes challenging classes. And as we all know, he is a tremendous athlete who has been a valued member of our football team for the last three years. But where his talent truly shines is in the sport of track and field. The eighth ranked shot putter in the nation, Thomas is an Eastern Connecticut Conference State and New England champion, setting school and ECC records. Thomas's teammates look up to him on the field because of his positive attitude, his passion for the sport, and his work ethic. You can hear. Tom is known for having an approachable and friendly demeanor. He is a kind young person who supports and encourages his peers, which has been recognized by his teachers who nominated him for to the Leadership and Service Club Peers Reaching Out. As a member of the club, he provides tours for new students and helps them get acquainted with Eastlime High School. He's also been a member of Best Buddies since his freshman year. When he's not serving the Eastlime High School community, Thomas works at Free Bells Marina as a doctor and volunteers his time working with youth football. Congratulations, Tom.
Thank you. There you go.
Okay, I got a lot.
Today, okay?
Yeah.
Thanks, Mrs. Kelly.
Next up on our agenda is the Eastlime High School Cheerleading Recognition.
Mr. Marko. Sure, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Good evening. Thank you for having me again. Before I start with cheer, I'll just share with you, today is my one-year anniversary of being the athletic director. It's been amazing. I'll leave it at that. But we're here to talk about cheer. Coach Hannah and Coach Kristen are two of the first, they were two of the first coaches that I met here at Eastlime High School last summer when I started coming in. One of July, they were running a youth camp in the gym, ninety-degree weather. Two fans trying to keep the kids cool unsuccessfully. Hopefully, we'll have AC this summer. The camp went on all week with all the kids working really hard each day. That's when I knew we had a cheer program, not just a cheer team. Then, as the fall season approached, Coach Hannah mentioned they were in need of some more uniforms as her roster was larger than expected. Sure, what a great problem to have. I asked, well, how many girls on the team? Forty-six was the answer. That's when I knew we had, we didn't just have a cheer program, we had an incredible cheer program. Fast forward to comp season in the winter, specifically the ECC Championship at Waterford High School on February seventeenth, I was lucky enough to attend and watch their full, what became known as their full throttle routine. I certainly wouldn't consider myself a cheer expert by any stretch of the imagination, but what I saw for two minutes and thirty seconds that day was head and shoulders, literally better than anything I had ever seen in person. The girls were flipping, running, jumping, tossing, catching, yelling, doing it with enthusiasm and a huge smile, and I was just the coaches. Not only did they win their division for the third year in a row, they were named the grand champions for the second time in three years. They would follow that up with some very, some incredible performances on route to a state championship, including placing first at the, at Central CCSU and at the Connecticut Cheer Classic before their state-winning performance on March second at Trumbull High School to capture the Class L State Championship, our third team state championship at Eastlime High School this year. It was the program's fourth championship, the first since ninety-nine, ninety-six, and ninety-four being the other years. Congratulations to the girls, their coaches, and thank you to their families and their friends for supporting them in their memorable journey and accomplishments. This group was led by head coach Hannah Taylor, who luckily had a cooperative baby that held off being born until after competition season. And her amazing assistants, Kristen Morgan, Angela Young, Sydney Taylor, Annette McDonald, Ashley Galbo. And they are accompanied today with two of the three captains, Katelyn Felosi and Inabel Duker. And the other captain is Gianna Dealare. Congratulations.
We'd love to have the whole team on forty-six, but we can't put more than forty in this room for fire code, so.
Here, sorry.
Thanks, June. You want to say anything?
Oh, I'm not prepared. But thank you.
Okay. Back to track and tennis, everybody.
Next up is our Eastlime High School representatives.
Today at the high school was decision day for the seniors, so all the seniors came in wearing their university or college shirts that they're going to. The NGSS test takes place on Wednesday, the twenty-second this week. Friday is gonna be a snow day, so, or a snowflake day, so there's gonna be no school. National Honor Society list came out with fourteen new members. The induction will be on June third in the auditorium. Dinner dance is at Port and Starboard on June sixth. Is that for the seniors? It's for the seniors. Senior trip is on June fifth to the Sportsplex. Junior prom took place on the eleventh at Port and Starboard, and many teachers and students had a good time. It was well-attended. And, yeah. Award and scholarship presentation takes place on the thirtieth in May. Senior prom will happen on the twenty-fifth at the Mystic Marriott, and they are currently working on decorations. Sophomores taking Biology went to the annual Project O Bird Rookery Trip. Eastlime Rowing Association went to States this weekend, and the girls' first varsity came in second. The Viking Bowl has started selling again. Girls lacrosse qualified for ECCs in States. German Honor Society inducted ten new members. Spanish Honor Society inducted thirty-five new members. Rotary is holding a food drive from May thirteenth to the twenty-third.
So now that the end of the year is near, students, especially juniors, I know, are focusing on keeping their grades up. Seniors, not so much. Graduation is on June thirteenth, and we have rehearsal on the tenth, eleventh, and the morning of, I believe. And we are still working on choosing the song for walking out. There was a college field trip at Mitchell College about a month ago, and there was a good turnout. We heard that a lot of people discovered schools that they seemed interested in. Boys varsity lacrosse just held a car wash last weekend, and the class twenty-twenty-four the week before. Aces will take place on Thursday with an extended advisory. Teachers are coming out with summer book clubs for the continuing students. And tomorrow, officer position speeches will be held during advisory for Senate, which is obviously not for seniors, but. On the fifteenth, there was a mental health pop-up during lunch in the comments, and I know those are always popular among the students. We like to go through and see what they're talking about. We aren't sure of the date, but the goats and sheep came in again during lunch, and a divorce that was popular again. Students loved that. And now the stress of APs is over, so we're all kind of chilling out until the end of the year.
Anybody have any questions? Jump, what is the mental health?
So that's when several organizations come, and in the comments right here, they have tables set up with pamphlets, cards, and they kind of explain what their services are for. There's like anxiety, depression, counseling, things like that.
And the companies, the agencies that, you remember the four agencies that came?
Um, yeah, that's okay. I know one of them was Youth Coalition, Sarah came.
And I think the Brian Dabo Foundation was probably there.
Yeah.
Fabulous, that really is.
Thank you. So we have a gift for you. From the Board of Ed. Thank you. Isn't your last time with us? You get some flowers and we get to keep you.
Thank you so much.
She's busy all June here, so. We're gonna miss you, Mary. Good luck with everything.
I committed to North Carolina State.
What program?
Um, biomedical engineering.
Have fun. Have a nice summer, ladies.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up is Jason. Thank you for coming.
Pleasure. I have a feeling that's gonna be a tough act to follow.
Just love.
To share is slightly less. Here to talk about the referendum, which of course is happening on Thursday. Went here and everyone listening at home will feel that it's their job to come out and vote on the referendum, the community center, eight to eight. On going around town is a short-term, well, subcommittee presented what they've got so far. The results of a case in the Connecticut Supreme Court. Somebody else, but until that is decided, work is on hold. No, that doesn't act. As soon as I. I can share it with you guys. And that's pretty much it. We've had some small things come up, additional funding requests, some projects around town. That's all.
You have any questions?
Thanks again for being here.
Thanks for coming. Next up is the proposed consent agenda for this evening. I make a motion to approve the proposed. On seconded. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone staying? Consent agenda passes. On the consent agenda this evening is a proposed per professional wage increase for school year twenty-four, twenty-five, and a proposed regional remote learning project cooperative agreement, just taking place between LaGuardia and Wyandotte. So that's gonna be really nice. Thing for our students and our teachers to take part in, so that's really good. Thank you, everyone. Next up is the, for discussion is discussion action item personnel, unaffiliated wage proposal.
Yes, so we had our committee meeting three weeks ago. Review the unaffiliated wage increases. You can see the averages on the sheets. We had one outlier that's receiving a little bit more just to align her in her position, and that's it. Everybody else is sitting around that three percent main increase. Doing standard across the board. Happened to answer any questions, but. Team is part of the committee and. I'm sorry, yes, sorry.
We were a small committee.
We were a small committee, that's right. Committee approved and moved forward, so.
Any questions? Anyone like to make a motion? I would like to make a motion to approve the proposed unaffiliated wage salaries for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Anyone have any comments or questions? All right, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained? Next up is our two old board members. David and Ryan.
No introductions needed, right?
Introduce you. This is the Eastlime Public School Education Foundation presentation. Welcome, guys. It's nice to see your face.
Good to be back. I'll share my screen. Sure, I see. Carissa, can you give me access to share my screen, please?
Tim, that's an old picture. Dr. Hagan.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Well, that's, yeah, that's before I was on the board.
It's been a high school.
That was like your original Board of Ed campaign photo.
Almost twenty, twenty-five years old. Grant, can you make that a little bit bigger up there or minimize the post across the top? And then I can. Go to that picture. Unfortunately, Barbara couldn't make it this evening, but are here, and they've done a heck of a lot of work. I know I've been keeping you all informed through the weekly updates just to, after we have a meeting filling in as to, you know, where things stand. Yeah, COVID put a little halt on things for a bit, but to that, we, you all. All right, we'll turn it over to you.
Awesome. So thank you. Thank you for having me. I'm glad that we got rid of the Aqua. Been a little while. So for those of you who don't know me, my name is Ryan Trader. I have four children in Eastlime Public Schools, ranging from preschool to middle school. I've lived in town since two thousand fifteen and served on the board alongside Tim and Barbara. Your time on the board made us realize that an education foundation could be a great complement to our town and our district and further enhance our reputation for academic excellence. So tonight, I'd like to share just a few details about what we're planning and would be happy to answer any questions we have. We are, we're grateful for our support of our attorney Lauren McNamara and Michael Boucher. And through this process, we've been working with Jeff and Annalise to make sure that our plans are aligning with the district and to ensure that we're enhancing education in town and not causing any sort of burden. So, so why are we here? So last, at the end of last year, we established ourselves legally. We, we received our federal tax exemption. We're registered in the state of Connecticut. And we're planning to roll out officially in the fall, around September. Before we did that, we wanted to, to share, meet with you and share our plans and then get any, any sort of feedback. It's also, it's important for you to understand our goals and make sure that, that we're aligned with what what you're interested in, and you understand our intentions. All right, next slide. So, so yeah, I mean, we have a great district. We have great parents, we have great teachers. But we think that a foundation could give us just a little bit more help to continue to grow and improve as a district. It's, foundations have been successful in other towns. And so we believe we can serve a valuable role in supporting our students and teachers. Our primary mission is to fundraise so that teachers have a way to get funding for projects when, when they realize they need something extra in the classroom, something that will make education more exciting and engaging for the students. So next slide. So, just at a high level, so we're, we're nonprofit, nonpartisan. We provide a defined accountable means for individuals and organizations that want to contribute to the district for the advancement of public education in town. Connecticut law allows for the formation of, of education foundations and allows us to be tax-exempt for that purpose. And we're, we're bounded by the statutory provisions of state and local, or state and federal. And we're governed by a board to oversee our operational activities and make sure we stay aligned with our mission. We're independent from government funding, and our goal is to fund projects that aren't typically supported by governmental sources. And our goal is to create and manage the processes for fundraising, obtain grant proposals from teachers, review them, and then award grants that are consistent with the public schools and the mission of foundation. So are there other foundations? So in the, in the early stages, we were surprised to learn that there were roughly two hundred education foundations registered in Connecticut. And when we look in our local region, we were surprised to learn that that many of them also have education foundations. So if you go to the next slide, this, this is the, the view in our local region. And, you know, some of them are more active than others, but Eastlime clearly doesn't have one. Not a few attempts to start one in the past, but none have gotten quite this far. And so we really think that this highlights that there is value that an education foundation can provide the district. Other towns have realized that, and so we feel like it's time for Eastlime to have one as well, so that we can provide the same opportunity for our students and teachers. It's a lot going on in this chart, but, but primarily, there's, there's two roles. So we do fundraising primarily from alumni, community members, local organizations. And then we'll use that to fund grants. The project ideas come from the teachers, and we're gonna fund as many as we can. Teachers know the students best, so they're best positioned to figure out the right way for the, the things that kids will want and resonate with. All right. So progress so far. So we are registered in Connecticut. We have our federal tax exemption. I believe, you know, Jeff has been providing updates to this process, so it shouldn't come as a surprise. We've also, we've solicited feedback on our plans from local charities like the Community Foundation of Eastern Connecticut. We've reached out to several other education foundations for feedback, understand how they work. We've had meetings with the Teachers Association, as well as the PTA presidents, and got a lot of useful feedback through that process that's helped us refine our vision. And so our goal is to open up in the fall with, so open up in the fall for fundraising with grant applications opening in the spring to be funded for projects the following fall. So we're, we're a year out from getting into the classroom with the projects. The first year, our plan is to start with mini-grants. So this is primarily single teacher, single classroom type grants to, and, you know, giving the teachers enough time to plan so they can be ready fall. And, you know, we're hoping that with fundraising success, that in the future, we'll be able to offer more, you know, bigger grants, but we're trying to ramp up in a measured way. Of course, be happy to come back in the, in the fall as we get closer to September and kind of share our final plans, but this is kind of the, the plans that we have right now. So just wanted to share these plans with you. Welcome any feedback. And that's all I have.
Well, first of all, thank you. I mean, Jeff's been giving us updates, but it's great to have you guys come back in and give us more of an in-depth look. I'm curious, and this might be too early on in the process, but have you guys started mapping out kind of what the criteria or process will look like for how teachers get selected for, for grants and kind of how those will be, you know, distributed?
Yeah, so, so our primary, so we have, absolutely, Barbara's primarily leading that effort. But we're, we're coming up with sort of a rubric. And our plan is to actually to publish that to the teachers ahead of time, so they can see how we're gonna evaluate a proposal. But it's things like student engagement. There are some, we're putting some restrictions on it. Like, you know, we can't encumber the district long term. Like, we can't sign up for something and then suddenly teachers will come to you for maintenance costs. But primarily, student engagement, number of students that'll be affected. And, you know, alignment with the curriculum, but also, you know, these are things that are extra, you know, that, that aren't basic supplies, things like that. So we are working on that.
It'll all be web, web-based, and Barbara's basically got the whole thing pulled together, because it's very easy to go and steal from other educational foundations. And, and Annalise has been prepared some test cases that Barbara has, and they're gonna run some things through it to see that, is it, is it workable? Is it easy? That was the biggest feedback we got from the, from the meeting with the teachers. Was to make sure that it's a very easy system to fill out. Then Barbara very much wants to include the rubric, as, as Ryan was saying, for what is the criteria for acceptance, so that they actually literally, a teacher can look at it and say, yes, I see exactly what it is. And it's gotta be really simple, very simple. And we've, we've got the grading scale that Barbara's also worked on as well. So I think that all that's gonna be loaded up onto a website for teachers and for anyone to, to see. Yeah, I, I, again, I want to thank you guys. This is huge. As you know, Wyandotte has one. I've been the recipient of many of their grants. You probably are aware of this, and in our case, you know, sometimes they've been a combination with other grants, like we've, we've got federal money, but it wasn't enough to get us over the hump, so we've pulled things together. It was huge, made a tremendous difference in terms of accessing materials, equipment that we would not have been able to access. And I'm aware of the, you know, many of the mini grant, mini grants that have gone through too that are really game changers that get kids fired up that teachers wouldn't have been able to have access to. So this is well overdue, and, and I thank you, because I'm sure this was not an easy hurdle to get over, to get this thing off the ground, so. There, yeah, there are three of us that have been doing, pulling this together, and again, with the advice from Annalise and Jeff as well. And we will be adding additional help. Supporters or whatever, we constitute the board, but there will be opportunity for people to participate and, and grow with this. So as Ryan said, it'll start off slow, but we, what we want to do is get, get. Uh, as Ryan said, it'll start off slow, but we, what we wanna do is get, get some money. Get some money, so some teachers can do some things. And have happy, smiling faces on the website, because they've been able to do something, and the children benefited from it at all. And then it will just continue to grow, and it's amazing what some of the foundations have done across the state. I mean, it is, you know, I mean. Mind-boggling, um, we just, we just wanna kind of get, get, get started here, as Ryan is saying, and, uh.
Thank you so much. You know, this has been something I've been talking about before I got on the board. When we moved here from Nebraska in ninety-six, I believe it was. We had a foundation there, and same thing, where money is being appropriated, so it's a national thing, it's not just Connecticut. And people, alum are happy to donate to it, people will do it for their birthday. To the foundation. When my son passed away, uh, fourteen years ago, quite a few people gave money to the Lincoln Foundation on his, in his behalf or in his name. So it's just so much opportunity for it to be a legacy and a remembrance. So thank you again, both of you, to continue to serve our board and our community and all of us, and we really appreciate that, because that will. Help to bring another grants, another funding, because if you have other funding coming in, this is like a win-win, you know that, I'm not telling you, I think you already know, but. Thank you again, really appreciate it.
I just wanna say thank you, and are you accepting donations?
Not yet.
Can we Venmo you?
I'm serious, like if someone wants to donate, can they donate?
Uh, uh, we're not, it's, we're not open for business yet, because we gotta make sure we got everything well organized, and then we're talking about. The rollout, the communication plans for how to do this, and that's, we're pretty, pretty deep discussion right now about exactly how to do it, because we wanna, we wanna to roll out. And be, and be successful and, 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 and workable, um. With where we're at right now. It's so, it's such a fragile time, because it can, there's only three of us. We've gotta get some more people, we're gonna get some more people, we had people raise their hands, uh, to, to get involved, um. But, uh, uh, it's, it's really critical, so. I, I hope that we'll be back in, when, in the, in the fall, early fall, probably early September. To say, ta-da, here, here it is. Yeah.
We have our checkbooks.
I'll have my checkbook ready, waiting. Jill has.
I just have a quick question, how could we, as the Board of Ed, be of service to you or work in partnership with you? In any ways, or anything you'd like to tell us, suggest?
Just that, that this is coming, um, right now. Right, that, that's probably the, the best thing, and then, and then as we continue to evolve, um, obviously, we'll, uh. It's very important for us to make sure that you're aware of what we're doing. And that you, that you're supportive of what we're trying to accomplish as well, so, I mean, just, just. By having us here and presenting to you is, is exactly what, what we, what we, what we need from you and your feedback, and so we can keep. Going in the right direction.
So you have no task force, Tim?
Tasks for us, yeah.
Remember, Jill.
Yeah, well, you know, remember, this is a great opportunity for people that decide that they've, they've done enough of the Board of Education, and, uh. But would like to kind of.
Calling you guys the ex-Board of Ed. Like, all the ex-Board of Ed members, they go make up the education. I like it. Thank you guys so much.
Lunch.
It's nice seeing your faces.
Yeah. Nice presentation.
Yes.
Yep, yep. Also?
Yeah.
You're welcome to stay.
I mean.
Brian has his daughter is in the, uh, emergency room. Oh, Emily is, oh, it is, just an x-ray, not the emergency.
Yeah, okay.
Good night, guys, thank you.
Good night.
All right, is the release, I don't know if Lisa's not here.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, well, uh, next up is the, uh, a lot of policy. Just, let's just run through it, since I don't see her.
She's not online.
I don't even want me to.
Yeah, why don't you just, I think that makes sense.
All right, so first up is, A is first re-reading of policies in the three thousand series, uh, it's three, three, two, oh, it's a new purchasing policy. And I don't have my moment notes, because I wasn't expecting to present, um, yeah. Yeah, I think, are they more aligned with the town?
Well, no, um, the shipment issued, it's updated, uh, policy, and really the only change was, um, in the front, they added, um. Definition for what special services were, instead of embedding it in the body. And then, uh, they updated a few, um, thresholds, so like, we're, um, the request for the number. For services went from twenty to twenty-five thousand. Um, and I think that was really it, everything else, because the town policy of their thresholds are far greater. Ours, um, so I did.
This is the last one from our audit from last year, right?
This one was part of that, this one was.
Update, yeah, we had done that update, this was just for, to be in line as shipment issues, updates, we wanna make sure we get on board and. Let's take their recommendation.
And that's what these next. They're all new or revised.
Does anyone have any question on that three, three, two, oh?
Yeah, please let me know if you, if you do between now and the second read.
The next one is the first reading of policy. My computer, four, one, five, two point six, um, the FMLA policy that the state of Connecticut enacted. We were just getting up to date on it. If one has any questions, those thirty days between reads.
Anybody use that at all, Tim?
Oh, yes, definitely, now there's just policy to it, we've never had policy before, but yes, we have used quite a lot.
The next one is the first reading of policies in the five thousand series. Uh, five, one, two, seven, high school graduation requirements. Five, one, three, one point eight one, use of private technology devices by students. Five, one, four, one point five, suicide prevention and intervention. Five, one, four, four, student discipline. Five, one, four, four point four, recess and play-based learning, and five, one, four, eight. Improve completion rates of the free application for federal student aid. So freedom, if you have any questions. You ask, and I'll say that the five, one, four, eight is a mandatory one. Same with some of the FAFSA requirements in high school graduation, five, one, two, seven. Next up is the second read, second reading of review of policy in the one thousand series. That's one, two, five, oh, school visitors, this is up for approval.
Yeah, I didn't receive no feedback or anything.
I make a motion to approve the suggested revision of policy twelve fifty, school visitors as presented.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions or comments on this? And, I mean, oh, my gosh, sorry, I'm having a brain. Anybody would like to say, yeah? Whoa, my brain just closed down there. Bye, Jill, yes, no. Okay, anyone oppose?
You gave a thumbs up.
All right, anybody abstain? That passes unanimously. Um, next up is the second review of policy in the four thousand series, um, these are. Four, four, two, oh, employees of district computer systems and electronic communication. Four, one, one, two point five, employment and student teacher checks. Four, one, one, one point three, increasing educator diversity. Four, one, one, eight point one, one, four, reports of suspected abuse of neglect of children, or reports of sexual assault of students by employees. These are all up for approval tonight.
Make a motion to approve the suggested revision of policies in the four thousand series as presented.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions or comments? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone staying? Passes unanimously. Next up for second review and approval tonight is five thousand series, uh, five, one, four, one point two, one, administration of student medication in school. Five, one, three, one point nine, bullying prevention, as you mentioned. Five, one, five, five, student use of districts, computer systems, and internet safety.
I'll make a motion to approve the suggested revision of policies in the five thousand series as presented.
Second. Anyone else have any questions or comments? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? And that passes unanimously also. Thank you, everyone. Jeff?
Um, couple, just a few quick reminders, updates, uh. Uh, but first, let me, you know, the end of the year, and so, we're, we're, we've like three weeks left before, you know, school is, is over, which is amazing, so. Just a shout out and a kudos to all of our staff and our administrative team for all the work and efforts. That, uh, they are engaging in right now, because it is such a busy time of year, and then the cliff just kind of ends and we fall off and everybody goes home, sort of thing. Um, so it's just very busy, so I just wanna give a shout out to them for their work. Uh, we're looking forward to promotion, middle school promotion on the twelfth, and high school graduation on the thirteenth, June, and let's hope for good weather. So both will be here on the, uh, on the turf field, as we've done the last couple of years. Uh, retirement party reminder, if, um, you're able to attend this Thursday at the Flanders Fish Market. Looking forward to recognizing, we have five retirees who will be present, so that'll be exciting to celebrate them on Thursday, late afternoon, early evening. Um, and then I'm just gonna do another reminder about the referendum, Jason already mentioned it, so thank you, um, on Thursday.
So in between retirement dinner and.
Between retirement dinner, where kids, you know, where you fit it in, you know, vote and, uh. You know, we'll go from there, so that's really it. Rest of the week, good.
Nice.
Um, I'll just second what Jeff mentioned in terms of kudos to the administrative team. Um, also extension to, um, all of our test administrators in our building right now, we are on the tail end of our summative assessment schedule. Um, with, you know, very, very little, um, glitches along the way, and that is because. Uh, we are just so proactive on the front end and making sure things are organized and, and, um, set up in a way to, um, set kids up for success in those summative assessments, so. Kudos to that entire team, uh, we have NGSS wrapping up this week, and then we'll do some makeups, uh, but other than that, we are, we're wrapped up for the season. And the results are already trickling it, so you know, I, you know. I'm in there. Yes, so, um, you know, just, uh, excited to see, you know, how the impact of some of our, you know, new programming this year, um. Demonstrates how it, how it plays out in the way of the summative assessments, so. We'll just, obviously be bringing some of that information to you next week, but also in the fall as well.
Um, I, I, maybe I. Forgot or was asleep or something, I, I can't remember, um, what reading program has that been? Was something selected?
Yes.
Okay.
We selected Wit and Wisdom Compendium.
Okay.
Which is the wit and wisdom for the content knowledge, knowledge building component, the comprehension component. And then that would be worked, uh, that would be implemented alongside what we already use, which is, uh, fundations.
Okay.
Um, and then for the K one, um, grades, uh, in addition to Hengery. So with those three programs together, but one of which we are already using.
And how, how's it going?
Um, well, we are, you know, folks who were piloting, some of them have continued to move, continue on. Um, but at this point, we've done one day of full professional development, um, for all of our elementary teachers. And then, um, there's a second day that, um, all teachers will need to engage in before the first day of school. We have three dates to choose from, so there's a date in June, a date in July, and a date in August. Um, so that, that selection went out already to teachers, they've selected their dates, uh, they're on the calendar, scheduled with Wit and Wisdom. Uh, materials have been ordered, so that at least those first module materials can be in the hands of teachers before they leave them for the summer, so they have access to their materials to. You know, start reading and getting to. Um, and then I'll have small teams coming together to sort of curate resources and get some things populated on our teaching and learning hub as supplemental resources for teachers as they get started. So we are on our way.
Good.
Yeah.
Is the library, um, in support of this, our town library and?
Uh, oh, I have not connected with the town library yet, but it, but that's a great idea, because there are some supplemental texts in addition to the, you know, the core texts. That are part of the program.
They're a great resource.
Yeah, so we'll definitely make sure that our library needed specialists are connecting with them. But all of our specials teachers were in, involved in that first day training, so they got to know a little bit about how the program works. Um, a lot of it actually is utilizing, um, resources like artwork to.
Good.
To do some skill building, and so just getting.
Knowledge, that sort of thing.
Yeah, so getting our, um, library, our music teachers involved, uh, is a, uh, gonna be an essential component to it.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Sounds great. Well, thank you for all your hard work on that, really appreciate it.
And so nice idea to recognize the ones that, teachers that did the pilot, and then their next meeting.
Yes, I've nominated, I've nominated them, they're coming in.
They got, they got beat up on.
Yeah, didn't they, I was just gonna say, didn't they too?
He did a lot of programming, right, right, it's the same thing.
Most of them coming in, piloted three separate programs, um, and so. You know, we're recognizing anyone who had a hand in the work.
Thank you.
Because they really, all, all of them have gone above and beyond, but some of them have really done it all.
Look, if they feel like they, they own it, like they piloted it, now they can be the cheerleaders behind it.
Absolutely, so we did, um, in, in, um. In appointing our fellows positions this year, uh, it was, it's been required that, you know, they have piloted Wit and Wisdom resource, so that. That fellow position is knowledgeable in the program, and has already had experience in, so.
Good work.
Yeah. I'll just add one last thing, because you've got me now, go. I started, I.
Well, your passion shows, that is right.
We, we already started crosswalking the K modules with, um, our consultants for play-based learning. And we're already talking about creating some play-based learning that align to the modules and Wit and Wisdom.
Love it, love it.
Really, the point of this is for everything to come together and be integrated, and so that will be the next level of work, is weaving in science and social studies standards.
Well.
And not making it separate and apart, but building upon those, those literacy models.
My philosophy, and who is the publisher for Wit and Wisdom?
Um.
I can look at that.
No, 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 I know it, I just, come on, Annalise. Hold on.
Great minds. You're welcome.
Oh, we need somebody to help us. Is that Carissa or Danielle?
It's me, it's Carissa.
I love it, thank you so much, that's great.
Yes, everyone's involved.
Miss Mariana?
Um, well, we're trudging along with the Munis implementation, um, hopefully the budget passes on. Thursday, and then we'll get started hosting, um, and getting next year ready. Um, and then I, maybe you guys know or don't know, but you guys are supposed to be doing some training. Hey, uh, the state passed legislation that Cabe, that Board of Ed members, so Cabe put Casbo in charge, so. Oh, okay, so, um, I will be presenting in October for one of the sessions, but there's, um, sessions in June. August, September, and October, various different topics that has been broken. Um, so we don't have the dates yet. That's it, unless you guys have any questions for me?
Just to share too, I mean, I think you're, you're being kind of quiet in the fact that you have gone through so many Munis trainings. Very on top of your current job, so.
Munis trainings.
I, I mean, honestly, how many days of Munis training have you?
A lot, it's a lot. Training, and it's just the, the work and the, the implementation of a general ledger system is just very, um. You know, it's, it's a monumental, I, I don't think.
Can I change the monumental word? How long have we been talking about Munis?
Oh, God, well. Seven years, six, I've been here eight, so maybe seven, six, so.
Oh, it looks.
We are, we are, we are, yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's looking good, I'm, you know, proofing everything out, and so it's, it's getting there.
Are you happy, Mariana?
Oh, it's a great, it's, it's a much better system, it's definitely a much better system, a much more efficient system than we have right now, it's much more user-friendly. I think the principals, the secretaries, I mean, you know, it'll be a learning curve at the beginning, but I think they're gonna, um, appreciate it, there's a lot more. Um. Uh, what I would call, you know, internal controls and. Uh, processing of, uh, change orders and budget transfers, you know, getting rid of paper for everything and trying to. So it, it's definitely a much more efficient system. Yep.
She's done a great job.
Yeah.
Had a triple A meeting. I don't know who the chair of triple A is, still.
Yeah, so, uh, well, a lot of folks were here, but I will recap, um, so. Tonight, we really just focused on, um. Uh, taking a quick look at our new survey tools, the Satchel, um, we have. Collected some data, um, and we are learning how to look at it and all the things that we can do with it.
Collected some data, um, and we are learning how to look at it and all the things that we can do with it. We had another survey go out as well, um, which some of that data is already coming in. Um, we plan on, you know, look at both sets of data at our meeting, um, it's not our culture. Meeting coming up next week. Um, we're very excited about the tool. Um, yet we are, um. Still learning how to. Make the most of it, so.
I'll put in a plug though for some gratitude. I already shared this with, uh, Emily and Bill, but I mean. The amount of time and effort and work that, that went into getting to where we are now, um, was a lot. And I'm very excited that I feel like this really is a strong foundation that's going to help, um, kind of help direct and kind of. Get the rest of the, like, actual, like, action planning, uh, underway for years to come. So this was a really crucial step and I'm just, I'm very excited to see. What comes of it in future years.
All right, um, okay, I'll do a cave update. Um, yeah, talented student showcase, uh, is due June fourteenth for the Cape convention, which is eleven fifteen and eleven sixteen. Um, summer leadership will be August eighth. Um, as Mariana said, the cave getting the STE contract to do new student, uh, new board event orientation. Cave is going to be doing a lot of leadership, new board orientation events. For the coming years, it seems. Um, so the leadership will have a new board event component. They will do a couple of them a year so that new board members can get acclimated.
Maybe doing any of them in New Haven instead of always up by Hartford?
Well, the one on the eighth is at, uh, Water's Edge in Westboro. Um, the one in December is in Rocky Hill. Um, and they're going to try to do a couple more spread throughout the year. So that it, it's not so far to travel and for the board of members who can't make one, they can make another one because they usually just do the one after the election. Um, so then people who are appointed and miss. Getting in. So, and when you guys just get elected, it's hard to then like the next week, go to a new board event and Bert orientation. So they're really looking at it and they're trying to make it. Year round to new board member orientation, so. We'll see. Um. More comments?
Hey, I just wanted to say thank you so much for all the birthday cards for my friend Harry Daniels who turned one hundred. And for those of you who don't know Harry, Harry was a good friend of mine and still is, still, still alive, still doing well. Uh, we got moved from his home in Niantic up to outside of where he was born, up in Long Meadow, Massachusetts, which is a ninety minute drive. He had a wonderful birthday party. He was a little overwhelmed, I have to say, but I walked in with a box of homemade cards from. Our kids and just wanted to be sure and say thank you. They were just so adorable and he was so touched. It was just such a.
Glad we could help out with that.
Yeah, yeah, that was just perfect. And, um, I entertained the kids with animal blood. So that was kind of fun, but. Thank you. Thank you again for that.
Anybody else have a workout? I do. Um. Standardized testing, which is normally stressful and I love that our district makes it not stressful and like a little bit of fun. Because, well, because the kids have an extra recess and they have an extra snack, you know, homework. So it makes it a little less, especially for the elementary kids who it's their new. I just want to say thank you for, you guys doing that because it does, I hear other districts and other states and other schools and. They hate testing and the kids are freaking out. And I do want to say thank you. Also, um, my daughter had the middle school orientation this week. And she was having anxiety and she was so scared and so nervous and she didn't want to go, but she went and she had, she came home. So full of excitement and energy. I'm going to be in this Kiva because that's the one I want to be in and this is going to be my teacher. And I told her that's how it works. But she was so excited. So thank you for getting all that done.
Enjoy lunch, student barbecue.
We brought her. My, my children are so picky. She brings her own lunch. But it was a nice, because she was so full of anxiety and it was nice that they had a fun day.
Yeah, I know the middle school team's been really working, you know, that's been their focus areas.
The older kids weren't there. They were on a field trip, I think, right? So it was just the fifth and sixth graders that were there. So it was kind of low key, so. Glad to hear. Lots of rave reviews. And I heard, I saw my antique center school playground was very busy the other day with all the pre-K kids. I drove by and I was like, what is going on? But I guess there was a kindergarten play group happening for all the next year's kindergartners. And the playground was packed. So I, it was nice to see.
Chris Urban was supposed to bring rhubarb tonight too. So I don't know, did you see him tapping? Oh, it is. And I didn't see it. So it's been that cooler right there. Yeah. So please, on your way out, everybody.
Grab a rhubarb.
A jar of rhubarb. Have to say, these meetings are way better than Boris' like. Got through this agenda in an hour. I'm like.
That's true. You know, technically, depending on whether or not the legislature passed it, all of that members could get paid. All right, any other board comments?
I did want to find out about teacher appreciation. What kind of, what, what did you guys do?
Yeah, so the PTAs do amazing job, number one. Um, we provided on Wednesday, last Wednesday, a lunch for every staff in the district. Uh, we sent us a little C pack. It's two, just thanking them for growing our children. Something we've never done before. So, you know, it's, it's small, but, uh, we did a nice lunch.
Anyone future agenda items? All right, and adjourn meeting.
Come on. The favor, uh, I'd like to make a proposal or.
Anyone second? I will second since nobody's going to do it. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And meeting is adjourned.